Let me get over your eyes please and stand please and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We really don't have any good news tonight. We're removing that from the agenda. But we would like to take a moment of silence for A.J. Mary in his standing, please. Thank you. This will bring us to our first bullet comment portion on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the board in. Just state your name if you need to, three minutes.
Hello, I'm Jane Garner and I'm a math teacher at East or West Steen. And a couple of weeks ago, we covered a section on taxes. And I had a lovely volunteer come in and do a wonderful job. And I would just like to thank you, Mr. Benzinger, for taking time out of your schedule to come into my classroom of eighth graders. And we had an open comment for a while, but we kind of stopped that. It kind of veered off a little bit. But you did a wonderful job. My students talked about it, like, oh, I couldn't believe all this. You carried in two big, huge books. I didn't even know they made books that big, you know? Covering tax laws and all this stuff. They got very excited over your presentation that you did. And I just want to say, thank you very, very much for taking time out of your schedule to come into my classroom and help my students understand taxes. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, let's move on to revisions and approval of agenda. There's a couple things we need to remove. Again, the good news, we're going to remove the 18, 19 financial budget and 19, 20 proposed budget and grant update. We're removing that as well. So if I can get a motion to remove the good news portion and the financial update from Nikki.
Support.
And roll call?
Abbott?
Aye.
Benzinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
McNamara?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
Okay, we got some new dates for MSAB training. I know we did some in January. But this is some new dates here. So we got June 17th, 18th, 19th.
That's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right.
I just do not do it Monday because I'll be coming home the 16th.
Okay.
But I would be okay with the 18th or the 19th.
I'm good for the 19th, so...
It's Wednesday.
Yep, Wednesday.
Is that good?
I'm out of town that whole week. You're out of town that whole week.
I am good for all three.
I'm good for all three.
Can you pick out?
All three, good for me. There. So...
Do you want to look at something the week after or so everyone can come?
Can everybody come the week after?
I'm good the whole next week.
Yep. That is the week of the 24th to 28th, correct?
Were you going on?
Yep, we've got a board meeting Monday, but the rest of the week's free.
All right, so I'll have Terry look at the following.
I've got a free plan trip. I can't cancel. My kids will throw me.
All right, the next item is the date for truth in taxation and budget hearing.
Please take notice that on June... That doesn't seem very loud. Is that better? Okay. Please take notice that on June 24th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Board Office Annex in Tecumseh, Michigan, the Board of Education of Tecumseh School District will hold a public hearing to consider the district's proposed 2019 and 2020 budget. The Board may not adopt its proposed 2019-2020 budget until after a public hearing. A copy of the proposed 2019 through 2020 budget, including the proposed property tax mileage rate, is available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Board Office in Tecumseh, Michigan. The property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. This notice is given by the Board of Education.
Terry will post that in the paper as well, so... All right, district reconfiguration.
Okay. Just a quick, before we start, I do have an announcement to make. We have a new student services coordinator. Mr. Greg Brown was hired. I'm going to have him stand forward. Just give a quick, if you can come up here so everybody can see your good side and the other side. Just give a quick synopsis of who you are and what you're going to do for us.
So I'm Greg Brown. I've been working in special ed for 15 years. I have my administrative certificate. And I'm going to review what you currently have, see where we can make some changes, and go forward from there, so...
All right.
Okay, as you know, from the last meeting, where Tecumseh is looking at a deficit next year of about $1.3 billion. It was initially, I thought, about $1.5 billion. It's been reduced to $1.3. But we still have some cuts to make based on projected grades. Our students enrolled at various grades. Some things that we think we can do that'll help in the short term. And again, some of this is just reconfiguration of buildings. It's not necessarily... When you look at it, it doesn't like a cost-saving measure. It's not going to be the biggest factor. So we, right now, we have early learning centers that are K-1 buildings. The possibility exists of making those K-2 buildings. Moving one grade out of Compass because Compass is packed. Trying to get five grades to there for lunch. Even though the traffic is better, it's still heavy. I mean, you know, you're Robin Peter to Paul to a certain extent. We're taking one grade out of Compass, but we're putting it at two other buildings. So we're taking a second grade that's picked up at one location, splitting it between two others. Another change you'll see is trying to flip the starting time. And that would move that to an earlier time for fifth and sixth grade. The reason is because right now, sixth graders who normally have been able to participate can't compete, but they can run exhibition... They can have exhibition wrestling matches, cross-country, and track. The sixth graders can't do that currently because they don't get out of school till about the time that the meets quite often start. I think 4:30 is the normal start time for middle school meets. At least they were when I was athletic director, three or four years ago. I didn't check to see if that changed. It's usually a little bit later than high school. So that's one change. The third and fourth would stay the same to keep the same bus schedule, the same bus runs. East and West, looking at... Okay, so first of all, right now, one building is seventh, one is eighth. That can still be the configuration, but considering having seventh and eighth in each building. And the reason is because when you look at having to make budget cuts, with seventh and eighth grade, you have to have a major or minor technically to teach in that, in the subject that you're in. By putting people together, we may be able to flip. We may be able to get a teacher who can teach a couple of sevens and maybe one eighth grade if we're short in areas. I don't know yet until we get all the retirement paperwork in and figure how many teachers we have to hire when we start plugging those holes. But that's a possibility. You see, we're not going to do it. It's just a possibility. We could do it. I mean, if it's something we have to do to try and save somebody, we will. High school, it remains unchanged. So that's for the 19, 20 school year. But there's a follow-on with 2021. And there's two scenarios. I apologize, this isn't real big in the back. One would be to keep, we've already taken step one to make these changes right here and leave the early learning centers alone. East and West could become three, four buildings. Compass would go back to a 5'8" building, which is what its intended purpose was when it was built. High school still houses 912. The Board Office would go to where the counselor's office is now at the north end. And then we could have other, we could build other offices across the hall from the high school. There were plans put together for this, you know, four or five years ago. And then we could close the existing Board Office that we have, try and sell that. Just closing it doesn't save us a lot of money. The estimates run between $25,000 and $30,000. Of course, that depends on whether you've got a high heat winter or, you know, the weather. It depends on how much snow you remove, that type of thing. Checking with the city, if that's a vacant building, all we have to do is keep the sidewalks clear. We would not have to keep the parking lot plowed out for emergency purposes because it would be an unoccupied building. Then the second scenario, and this is one that, you know, maybe has more merit, is we would go to three elementary buildings and expand those to K-3. The reason is because of the new Michigan reading law. It says if a person, if a student doesn't pass the proficiency test for reading, then they can be retained. And what that would allow the teachers to do, we have reading specialists in these buildings. The students who are having problems with reading are identified. They can have assistants going up, you know, from grades one, two, and three to try and get them proficient. Otherwise, they don't move on under the new law, which was so new to me. I read parts of it for the first time today. That's a joke because I haven't been doing this for a while. The West could become a fourth grade center. There's ample space for that. And actually, East could be the, either one of these. I mean, this is a you-pick-and-type-of-thing. There's room for a single grade in either one of these buildings. Compass days 5'8", high school 9 through 12 with the Board Office going there. Those are things that I'm looking at doing. And the first time the board's actually seen it too. I mean, there's been some, I mean, I haven't really gone out and got a lot of input from the staff. I mean, we can go today. I was just being sentenced to this job. But now that I'm here, I mean, we have to act. We have to, we know we have budget to try and reduce and look at ways to do that with a population that actually is declining. So I, that's the plan I have. Does anybody here have any questions about that?
So where's the cost savings, Adam?
Okay, the cost savings on the building primarily is just, especially when we get to this point, the plan would be that we eliminate a lot of the busing that we have right now. Right here, it's the first year. It doesn't really help a lot. But rather than try and make a colossal move, for those of us that remember the move that was made, or many years ago, it's big. And we really, this is about as big a bite. Our other option would be, what's that?
This is the second year.
Yeah, sorry.
So the other slide.
Yeah, that first line.
Right, okay.
Yeah, go back to the other slide. We could, the other slide, you know, our other option is we don't change any building configuration this year. And it's going to be tough to move a lot right now. I hope to have a maintenance supervisor hired by the end of the week. That doesn't give it much time to start getting stuff moved and teachers to pack stuff up. It's a short timeline. I think we could move eight grade, I think Compass right now as far as, as far as being the most crowded is Compass. So I guess the other, I mean, so the biggest time, the biggest money savings would be if, would be the busing. The second would be is if, and it's not even an option, or it is an option for this upcoming year in the 1920, is if we can combine, if we can combine staff in a seven, eight building, we could possibly. And I'm not looking to lay people off, but if we have, because we are having some retirements, if we can take that and mold people into, you know, two grades. Still not ideal, but we have, we keep from having to lay people off. We can be hiring and we can make that system work and actually get a reduce a little bit there. The big reduction, the bigger reduction, I mean, this doesn't really address the savings. This actually, I think, addresses a better system on how we can cut down on having our school buses like a taxi service around here.
Can you go back to that first slide?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, so the fifth, so you'd have two start times at the middle school?
Correct.
And only four grades, which I hear that's a real big problem. I mean, I even saw people parked way down by the library picking kids up.
And that's a problem, but honestly, being over there one day and watching them try and get kids through the lunchroom, it's like a cattle drive. And you got, and I have had emails, you know, where people are concerned that all year my kids, they only have 20 minutes and then they can go outside, but they haven't even finished their lunch yet. And that's happened.
So this can stagger, it'll help stagger the lunch periods even between the four?
Just add a little more time between them. It's all really does. It's not perfect. I mean, perfect doesn't really exist in real life, but it gets us a little closer, I think, to where we want to be. And with an impending move, probably move some of these grades down. It makes next year's, it makes the second year's move, which gives us more time to plan for that. And either way, these are still going to probably stay K-2 or they're going to become K-3. The one exception, if we go K-3, there'll be a third building. But it still cuts down on the amount of movement. It just defers, I guess, the cost savings as it breaks up. The cost over two years. It's more of a deferment than the actual savings in that respect.
It's better for the students to have that seventh and eighth grade combination. And on the next year, the fourth grade, I don't believe we should isolate any grade for the rest of the school system.
I would, you know, that's, I'm not going to argue or throw a con. It's your opinion that that's great, but the problem is we don't have a facility where we can put, I mean, we just, we don't have the space to put up to four. I thought about maybe putting four or five in one of the steam, they won't fit. I went around this afternoon and looked, started counting rooms.
We've done it in the past, you remember, the fifth grade.
Yeah, all three of my kids went here when it was a fifth grade center. And it had a whole slew of portables on the other end of the building. And it wasn't ideal, but we don't think we're going to get a new building built. And this is the most workable thing we've got right now. I mean, not, this is the best one for year one. Now we've got a whole another year for year two.
Yeah, figure that out.
Yeah, you can figure it out and you can hopefully, hopefully, we start gaining steam, pick up a few more students. Again, I'm not necessarily looking from a, just so everybody knows, from a teaching, learning, curriculum standpoint, I'm not looking to combine these buildings for that purpose. It's just for the purpose if I have to try and, you know, limit, save money, not lay people off, not have a couple of halftime teachers, you know, that type of thing. That's, this is not a gigantic budget saver. This is just reconfiguring the building so they make a little more sense. This is the building I get the most complaints from in a week. It's just the number of bodies in there. And if anyone, I was assistant principal there, we had as many as 1,100 there a couple of years. So the building will take it. It's just when you have five lunches instead of four and you just, you run out of time to get people through there.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the other slide?
I got it.
Now, there was talk that the buildings couldn't even hold, you know, K through two would be crowded. So K through three in North and South, sounds like it might be a stretch.
Except there'd be a third building to absorb that.
Oh, that's right.
That's, I see Josh and Rob are here. Would you two want to speak to that real quick about spacing and K-2 versus K-1? I said, you want to talk, I mean, about, you want to talk about space requirements? If we can fit K-2 in there with the projections we have right now for a year?
Yeah, I mean, the projections right now, depending on what kindergarten comes in. I mean, yeah, we can hold it, but there would be some space limitations due to class sizes if we had some influx in certain grade levels. That would increase the class sizes with how many classrooms we have right now. But capacity-wise, yes, we could do it, but we would have to get creative with certain things.
The scheduling would be an issue, like we said, that we could both do a lunch and take away a time and share gym space, so we have to get creative and probably add staff to schedule them.
Okay. We don't have, like I said, we don't have a perfect solution, especially with the facilities that we currently have. Again, one option that's out there is we can stand fast with what we have too. That's always an option. Any other questions? Okay.
Discussion?
I like the first step approach and I like proposing two up there. But I definitely would like us to look at, I'm not crazy about one grade in a school either, but fourth grade is kind of a pitfall year, so I don't know. I guess we're going to talk to some of the fourth grade teachers to get their thoughts on that. Oh, sorry.
The second year of that, though, is going to be influenced by if we get more students or we lose more students, that's going to affect what we do in the second year. So we really just got to concentrate on what we do in the first year here.
Right. So like I said, with having next year to look at it, know what more of our numbers are, that makes more sense. And like I said, I want to talk to the fourth grade teachers and get their thoughts on that.
Do we think we can cut enough out of the budget to get close to breakeven? Or maybe just have to dip a little bit into the fund equity or without making any drastic? I mean, shutting down a building, obviously, I mean, how much money is involved in shutting down a building?
Well...
I know you can always share principles. I know you can...
Shutting down a building...
Leads to other problems.
It does. I mean, let's say this building gets shut down, just hypothetically. So it's shut down, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It's never been a problem. So shutting down this building in this neighborhood is not going to make the people on land around here that happy. Because it's, it doesn't stay in good repair. Yeah, we can pay FNS to come out here and cut the grass, maintain it just like it always has. But it sits in here by itself. You turn the heat down to 55 on the boilers so things don't freeze and break. You'd have to have someone come check, you know, just to have one of the maintenance guys come by. It doesn't sound like a big deal to come by and check every day. You would have to maintain this, you know, in case you have any maintenance problems. So like snow removal still would be in play here more than at the other building because you're just a short distance off. You know, to get down this, for instance, this hill and get in and out, you can't let the snow pile up because they're going to have to get freezing. They're going to have ice, whereas at the current Board Office, that's not such an issue.
So it sounds like you're trying to do whatever you can to not close a building.
I don't want to because I just don't think that anytime you close a building... So you close it, you save $25,000. And I don't think that's totally arbitrary. I mean, we've looked at, we didn't, Nikki Reinhardt looked at the annual saving cost on electricity and gas. We're estimating with that would drop to, electricity, of course, would drop to a lot less because you wouldn't be running air conditioners in there anymore. Heat would drop some because you're not going to heat at the same level. But if you do the same thing in this building and you, it sits, you know what it's like if you've ever been into a house that's been vacant for a year and nobody's lived in it? It hasn't had fresh air. It just, yeah, I mean, there's just that smell about it that you just don't remove. And yeah, we've got a financial, we do have to address our budget. There's no question about that. But we're not circling the drain yet. So I don't want to give that impression that we are. I don't think it's, I don't think we're that in that dire straits. I think that we can still get students to come here. I think it's a good, I mean, what Griff presented last week. Were our high school ranks in the county, top high school in the county, and scores ranked 69th, you know, in the 89th percentile for the state by U.S. News &amp; World Report. So those are high marks. We just have to clean up our own act as far as our own demeanor. And we can get kids here because we're doing a good job educating kids. We always have in this district. It's not, maybe we don't broadcast the news because it isn't news. We've always led the county in ACT scores and now SAT, I know I have the same history with that. But I mean, the only team, the only school that usually could compete with us was Longaway Christian. You know, a much smaller school. And when you have a smaller school like that, three or four really bright kids really sway that number. So again, I just don't think this is the time to close a building. We don't need to panic. We just need to plan.
Greg, do you have a number on going with this plan as opposed to just staying static and leaving Compass overcrowded? What kind of numbers, does Nikki put anything on how much we'll save?
It's, it isn't really a savings in year one. It actually isn't. What it is, I mean, it might be miniscule, 10 grand. It's not a lot. The biggest thing is to alleviate the five grades in a class, in a school that's that size. And it can accommodate the number of students it's got, except in the lunchroom. I mean, state law says you have to have at least 25 minutes for students. And it probably varies by grade. I don't, I'd have to refer to some of the other principles here. And maybe the stuff I remember from a few years back isn't even pertinent anymore. I did not take the time to research that today. It's been crazy today to say this, but... 25 minutes of seat time to eat is what it used to be. It wasn't like you would give them 20 minutes and then send them outside for 10. That really wasn't what the state had in mind. You had to give them time to sit down, eat, masticate, digest, and then move on. And it's hard to do that in there right now, just with the number of, you know, you've always got some, you've always got kids that they want, they want help. They stick around a little later. They're late getting to lunchroom. Now you're really shorting their lunchtime. That's a concern for me. I mean, they're not very big kids, so they need that time. They need that time not only to eat, but just to socialize and be around each other.
So first year, really negligible cost savings. We're still going to take a big hit on budget next year. Or we can mitigate the cost elsewhere, but we're still going to take a hit on the budget being a deficit. Second year, we're looking at some savings?
Yes, there would be some savings.
Again, nothing earth-shattering. It's not eliminate deficit here.
Just a better configuration.
Just a better configuration, more efficient.
And busing.
And busing, but that's even still not a huge number. But right now, we need, we need numbers. I mean, we, you know, if you're in a good budget, 50 grand doesn't sound like a lot. If you're in a bad budget, it sounds like a lot more. You know, it's like when you have to make your house payment 1,100 bucks and you look and you only got 1,000, that 100 bucks is a big number. If you got 1,200, I got it. You make it for another month, you know?
Have you talked to the busing people at all?
I have not talked to the busing people yet.
We've not ever got a report from busing or anything.
I have not met with them yet, no, I have not.
Could you ask them if they could give us some sort of a overview of how many bus routes and just kind of like a history?
For...
Like what's going on right now?
That doesn't really change, that, neither one of those...
No, but I know, but...
The one, the one thing...
It wouldn't hurt to have it.
In the second year, the one thing that would happen is it would help by having the 5'8" students in the middle school where we have the orchestra room, the band room, the choir room. So it eliminates that busing. But Nikki pulled some numbers out, and a lot of it was based on fuel consumption, fuel prices. I don't even know if that factored in, you know, the miles, you know, you get charged, not just for the fuel, but the fuel costs are one thing, but you get charged per mile. This is the way it was when I was the athletic director three years ago. You get charged so many cents per mile every time the buses go out. And the rate of the bus drivers, a flat rate as well. So I don't, I can't imagine they're donating that time now.
Well, you've got two people basically full-time, right? Don't they have buses all day long? Each school has their own bus?
I don't know that.
Okay, they have one bus between the two schools, East and West?
No, they get dropped off at the high school and then ride a bus.
I mean, during the day for all the different transfers.
There are three buses that transfer from each building.
So a bus will come over, pick them up, take them to the high school if they need to. Or like right now...
Okay, so just three bus trips?
Approximately, depending on what's going on.
Right, okay.
Okay, I do have some preliminary budget numbers. I mean, I don't have anything on paper, so I... We ran into a problem today. Nikki's computer, she can't access it. Nikki Reinhardt's our business manager, for those of you that don't know. So she went back over the... Uh, so she went back over to the agent office and just telephoned me some numbers. Depending on how we wanna reconfigure next year, and I don't mean reconfigure the buildings, but I mean, take a look at, with the retirements we have right now that we know of. I'm pretty confident we can cut eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand without impacting kids in a big way. I can get that, I can email that out later, when I, when I get it assembled, I just have, I mean, literally, I have red ink all over one piece of paper right here. It's a mess, it's, my handwriting's the messy writing, and hers is, the good handwriting is Nikki's. But that was how we started, we were trying to use my e-financed to get it, it was just easier for her to go over to her office and put it together. All right, thanks.
All right, let's move on to action items. Need a motion to approve of the overnight trips for the athletic teams?
Support.
Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
The two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar is not going to change. So, we finally got word from the state on the last Friday that we are good to go, so. So, um, let's vote on it anyway, since it's on here. I don't think we need to vote on it, but we're gonna, so. Can I get a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar?
I make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar.
Support.
Roll call, Abbott. Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
All right, next item is the two thousand nineteen twenty Cooperative Shared Business Services Agreement with LISD. Gonna run from seven, one, nineteen through six thirty, two thousand twenty. It's in your packet. It's really about payroll, Nikki, and so forth. Can I get a motion?
Nothing's changed from last year, Greg.
Right, and we actually reduced some hours at one of the last board meetings, so, um, yep.
I move to approve the two thousand nineteen twenty Cooperative Shared Business Services Agreement with LISD.
Support.
Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Next item is we have to appoint a Kuncy Public Schools representative to serve on the two thousand nineteen LISD electrolobby, electoral body.
I volunteer Mike. I second that. Is that all right, Mike?
That's all right.
We also need a backup student.
Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Who was I?
Moore.
Moore, thank you. McNamara.
Aye.
And Simpson.
Aye.
Then we also need an alternate for that, of course, in case Mike can't make it, so.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right.
You wanna do it?
No.
Okay, I go.
Well, I'll nominate Suzanne as alternate.
I'll support.
Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Then we have, who we wanna vote for? First one is Richard German, and the second is Tim Andy Stutzwiler. So, I need a motion to, I think we'll just vote on both of them, so. We vote up, we're gonna vote on both, and then whoever has the most votes will get a vote, so.
Why can't we just nominate who?
We could do that too. Do you wanna nominate?
I'll nominate Richard German, he's the incumbent, and I know him from Adrian, and LISD representative already.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No, he has a very impressive resume.
Roll call. Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
And then we have the interim contract of our superintendent. I'm just gonna go over a few things here. It is a day-to-day, and Greg is retired, as you all know. And he only can make so much money a year. Do you mind if I tell Greg how much he can make?
That's fine, okay.
So he can only make twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. So, um, Greg is only gonna be, being paid two hundred dollars a day on a daily rate. That's agreed upon, and we've agreed upon, so he's donating a lot of his time to Kuncy. And I, I wanna thank you for doing that and stepping up to.
You're welcome, I mean, it'll only help, I mean, if, I know with the support of the teachers that are here, and the leadership we have, and the administrators that are here, we can make this happen. It's not gonna be a one-man show, this whole thing is we, not me. If, if it isn't, it won't work, but I, I, I'm gonna give it my best shot. I, I appreciate the opportunity and I'll do what I can. I still think though, out of fifty applicants for superintendent, I would probably be in the bottom five for sure. There are a lot of people out there that have a better job.
Well, I think you're doing a great job right now, so, thank you.
I've just about used up all my superintendent powers, oh, it's been a good time.
So, can I get a motion to approve the superintendent?
I move at least approve the superintendent's contract.
Support.
Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
And Simpson.
Aye.
All right, let's move us down to the consent, consent agenda. Approve of the minutes from major regular meeting, so.
I'm, support.
Roll call, Abbott.
Aye.
Benzey.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
McNamara.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Item scheduled for the next agenda will be the PBIS update from Compass, the end-of-year Title I report, budget report, technology services proposal, and truth and date for the taxation budget hearing. And that brings us to our second public comment portion. If you'd like to say something, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to speak.
Kim Hamstow, I'd just like to speak to the reconfiguration. You've obviously said, Greg, there's no money savings, and also, there's gotta be expense. You're moving teachers and classrooms down, so there's expense. After listening to the teacher speak last Wednesday, and everything involved in the turmoil in this district, I implore you to just make no changes. It's, I don't see the benefit this year, as late in this year. Spend your time working on those retirements and figuring out where these teachers are gonna be, so they have some confidence in the next year, and let it be.
Mike Casco, resident, first of all, welcome, sir. Thank you for doing what you don't need to do. And rebuttal to what we just had, you were brought in to make that call. Don't, don't let us tell you what to do. You're the one that has seized the numbers, you're the one that knows how the school functions, you do what's best for the school. And, the board was put in place to make these calls, calls aren't gonna be easy. Just do what you think is right to get the school back on track, that's it.
Bill Swift, Kuncy resident, Aaron. I guess I was anticipating that there would be more of a discussion about, well, the meeting that was, was held on Wednesday. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for a while now, and that meeting was the most relevatory, the most important, the, the, the most enlightening meeting that I've been to in relation to these school reconfiguration changes or anything to do with the school. I think the teachers, the administrators, the folks that are, the LISD staff that are in and out, you know, they actually had quite a bit to say about the way things are, which is they're markedly improved, improved over the initial implementation. I, I would hope that, you know, the three folks that were there at the meeting and shared this information with the other board members about the probably, what, eight to two, or maybe nine to one ratio of slow down, figure out what it is that you're, that you're about, and don't have impacts on the students, keep things student-focused. Uh, and I didn't hear any of that in today's discussion. I'm deeply saddened that, that, you know, this idea that, as, as appreciative as I am of Mr. Lewis taking on this role, which, sir, I, I deeply appreciate your time, being here, involved in this greatly. Uh, the idea that, you know, that coming out of retirement, he's got a handle on what's going on in these schools in just a few days, probably isn't the case. I question moving forward, and, and, and based on what the teachers and the staff shared on Wednesday, they're deeply concerned about you guys making changes without knowing. I mean, there's a difference between I have a general knowledge, and there's I know, I know for sure, and I have competency. And I, I'm gonna just say, the presentation that was provided on Wednesday, as far as what the impacts are of these kinds of changes on the students and the curriculum, and how much time that they're being instructed, this is a big deal. And, I don't care about the money, I don't. If we need to go to the taxpayers and ask for a few extra dollars to fix the, the things that need to be fixed immediately, then let's do that. I'm willing to invest in this community, I think the people in this community are willing to invest in our schools. The idea that we should just make a decision without knowing, because we say we don't have the luxury of the time or the money to figure out what to do in a tiny fashion, it's not an acceptable response. Student-focused, student-centered decisions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Craig. I know none of those are set, so, I know that. But, from my perspective, so, my daughter's in the class of two thousand twenty-two, she was on the front lines of the original change. So she went from Compass to here, to the high school, bam, bam, bam. The way that's proposed, if, so, I also have the luxury of having a son, who's in sixth grade right now. The way things are proposed, he'd go through the same process. He would go from Compass to one steam center, back to Compass, to the high school. That's a lot of change for a kid. So, for kids who are in younger grades and they get to spend more time in these schools, that may not be a big issue. But for the kids in the middle right now, that's gonna be a huge issue. So, I just ask that we don't make changes every year, because that's kind of the track. I would really like to see my son have the seventh and eighth grade that my daughter did not get. She got the steam center, but it was the first year, it was a little tumultuous. I'm glad she had the opportunity, adversity brings growth. But at the same time, we've learned so much, the steam centers are really rolling along. I have been just, every single morning is another day closer to my son getting to a steam center. And, and I feel like that's getting pulled out from underneath. I can't imagine my mornings when he gets to eighth grade and would potentially have to go back to Compass. So just please take some of those things into consideration, there are those of us in the middle where we've been through this before, and I don't wanna go through it again. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Chuck Relish. Unlike everybody else here, I'm not very happy that Greg Lewis is your superintendent. I have had runs and run-ins with him when he was athletic director. He actually sent an email mistakenly, calling me an idiot on drugs. Mrs. Kaufman took care of it. He retired early because of it also. If you'd like to check, please contact Kelly Kaufman, if you would, I'd be happy to collaborate that story. We have, I have emails to prove this slander statement toward me. I have threads in the emails to support it, and I have Kelly Kaufman's response to it. So, please take this into consideration. Thank you. May I submit it to you now?
You want to flip on all of those?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, do you have anything to add? Board discussion, and then, any discuss?
Yeah, after that meeting, I learned a lot at that meeting, I was one of the three board members there, but I'm sure the other board members have, have got a lot of contact from other teachers and people who, a lot of them are afraid to come up here to speak because of the way they're treated on Facebook, and the way we're treated, and so they figure they're gonna get the same thing. But we have heard from a lot of people, and we've taken everybody's point. So I just wanna say, and I did, I've been trying to study how these grades work, and what other school districts do, and what works and what doesn't. And at the la, uh, board meeting before last, or the board meeting, I asked if there was anybody who knew these schools that do the isolation of the grade like we do with the seventh and eighth grade. And, uh, it was put forward that Dexter did, I have contacted Dexter, Dexter has a seventh and eighth grade building. So I still have not, I'm still open to look, anybody that does what we do here. Thank you.
Well, and I could say I've also got emails from many teachers and so forth, just like you said, Mike, and the students, you know, both sides of the fence, so. About the steam centers. But the one thing about the steam centers is, it doesn't matter where the building's at, okay? Just because it's called a steam center doesn't mean that's what's actually being taught in that building. You can, you can call Compass a steam center, it doesn't mean that that's what's happening in that building. And if you do call it steam, you know, I mean, you want those kind of things happening there, you want science, technology, engineering, arts, math. And I, you know, I feel that if you move, there's more opportunity in the big, in that bigger school for more engineering and, and technology and so forth than what the kids currently have.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Didn't, didn't we have more programs when we had the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in that building?
Yes.
We were able to have a lot more after-school projects and stuff?
Yeah.
Well, there's after for clubs, and I do like the staggering start times, I, you and I have talked about that, and that, that I think alleviates some of the problems, and certainly having one grade out of there alleviates a lot of problems as well, as well. And this would be the least intrusive remedy for the first year, and the, the least challenging to accomplish, given our circumstances.
The magic is with the teachers, not the building.
Right, the teachers, no matter what building you're at, you got the teachers are doing a great job. And this isn't a curriculum change, this is strictly building change.
Yeah, trying to alleviate some of the traffic congestion, that's all it's for.
And all the money Bill Gates spends is foundation on education, every time it comes. back, he says it's the teachers, the teachers, the teachers. He doesn't care what system you have, what you're doing, it always comes back to the teachers.
Well, in a bottom-up driven system, where teachers can, you know, they talk about collaborating, and they, they, you know, they, they put their best ideas and the things that work the best forward, and they share that with each other, and, you know, um, you know, the senior teachers are coaches for younger teachers, and I, I just think they do a wonderful job, and they're gonna keep doing a wonderful job. Irrelevant of what building you're in.
I just want to thank all the teachers that showed up. I know that it wasn't easy to get up in front of your peers and the board and everybody else, so I, I, we had a great meeting, we got a lot of great information out of it, and we shared it with the other board members. You know, we're still trying to figure this out, but there's a lot of information still out there and a lot of things to consider. But, you know, the thing that we have here is the greatest teachers in the, in the county, and, you know, they showed that on Wednesday when they got up and talked to us and shared their ideas, so I just want to thank all of you again for coming out and talking to us and, you know, being brave enough to stand up and, and tell us how you really felt.
And like, like Tim said, we received a lot of communication from parents, teachers, and students, um, some that just weren't comfortable getting up and speaking, or that weren't able to attend or, or whatnot. Thank you for all of that. It's very helpful, it's helpful to hear from all sides. And I respect that, you know, it's hard to get up there, and I also understand that, no one wants to get caught in the Facebook thing. It's obviously been a rough day, um, so let's go ahead and finish this up.
Hey, Tim, can I make one comment in regards to Mr. Lewis, please? Since it was brought to... I had two kids go to school, both starting here in kindergarten. Mr. Lewis and I have had numerous run-ins, all ended great, I would say. Both my children have Mr. Lewis as a teacher. I'm sorry to see you care to get attacked because I would not have had my children with anyone but you going through the school district. So I'm gonna speak on the other side of, I will stick up for Mr. Lewis no matter what happens, because I know exactly what he did for my children, who both now have graduated college and both now have good jobs. Mr. Lewis, thank you, and sorry that you had to listen, nobody had to listen to you.
I'll make a remark too as well, and then I'm out of here, so. All right, so my name's Nick Brothers, last place I wanted to be here was here tonight, 'cause I'm a toddler, I was small at school until about my junior, senior year, when I ran into a bunch of athletic difficulties, especially with Mr. Lewis, my two old coaches, probably a couple names you guys haven't heard about, Eddie...
Oh, we're not having any more comments.
We're not having any more comments?
No.
Yes. You let him speak, give me my time, please. I insist, I'm a mom, please.
Nope, sorry, no more comments.
Can I get a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to PA two sixty-seven nineteen seventy-six, section eight, subsection H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, attorney-client privilege, information?
I move.
Support. Roll call, vote, Abbott?
Aye.
Benzing?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mac? McNamara? Sorry, I've abbreviated. Moore?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
This is why the Comcet's so messed up, is because no one wants to make these changes. When someone's brought to your guys' attention, you don't know anything.
He can speak to everybody sitting here. He can talk to us. You can talk to us. You can speak to whoever wants to hear.
Two names you guys probably haven't heard in a while, Eddie Fooling, George Lasker. When they got terminated, they got terminated from their positions because of Kelly Coffin. Nothing was done when they were from their corruption because George Lewis was, or Greg Lewis was the athletic director at that time. That's why nothing was done. There's been so much corruption covered up at the Comcet directly related to him. He may tell you, oh, I've been here twenty-seven years, oh, I may have been here and I made, did a great job. How much stuff did he cover up during that time? You may have had a great experience, congratulations, I did, and a lot of people, and a lot of other people did. From my experience with him, he's an awful human being, he's corrupt, and this is why the Comcet's so messed up. I was happy to leave. I loved my time at the Comcet High School, and I still held my head high during that, during my time at that school because of the way I carry myself. But what he did to me and my family and countless other kids and the stuff that he covered up was awful. Please take this into consideration, 'cause I really do not want to have to come back here tonight and speak.